Everyone, welcome to the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September of 2023. Our next meeting will be scheduled for October 11th, the second Wednesday of the month in October. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
I'll introduce the members of the board present. To your far right is Ms. Beverly Silveira. Next is Mr. Michael Wozniak. Next is Mr. Ed DeJesus.
Good evening.
I'm Craig Brady, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And to my right, your left, is Ms. Ashley Torrey, our counsel this evening. To the agenda, first item, executive session. We have no executive session. Second item, approval and acceptance of previous minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes, and I make a motion to accept up written.
Motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. We have no new business. We currently have no action on decisions. So we'll go to our first public hearing, which is Kolokowski, a continuation of public hearing requesting variances for the construction of an impervious service parking area. Whereas pursuant to Section 310-7, the maximum pervious surface coverage permitted is 35%. Property currently exceeds 35%. And whereas pursuant to Section 310-40A, four parking spaces are required. It is unclear how many are provided. And pursuant to Section 310-40E, no off-street parking shall be permitted within a required front yard in any district, and parking is proposed within the front yard. And pursuant to Section 310-42A, parking is required to be at least 10 feet away from the street. It is unclear how far from the parking stalls are from the street. Said property is located in the HB zoning district at 528 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as Section 220, Block 5, Lot 20. I see attorney and client are present. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. Richard Krogan for the petitioner. Good evening, members of the board.
Thank you. Good.
Last meeting we were at, a survey was requested by Jim Dillon, and we provided that survey. Jim had calculated 33.8% of lot coverage. So I hope that takes care of the lot coverage issue.
I believe it does.
Yes, based on the survey, that would be that a lot coverage variance isn't required.
Great.
But there are those other three.
Yep.
That were discussed, and I don't believe those have been addressed.
Well, I did provide a letter to the board regarding the parking in the front. Our argument is it's a pre-existing use where it was gravel before, and all that was added was concrete. So it's not changing. Okay. We're not changing any parking that was, or adding any additional parking. It was all existing as-is. All we did is add a concrete pad.
I have concern about that statement simply because when I look at some old Google Map pictures of the area, there was a grass and trees there at one point. So when was it converted to, from grass into gravel?
That's, when I held it, it's about 2005.
Well, you have to speak in the mic.
I took over the property at 2005, and it was, there was no trees. The trees, whatever they are there, they are still there. There might have been some grass protruding from the pavement area. I mean, not pavement, I'm sorry, the gravel area. Because grass does take over in the gravel areas.
So from at least 2005, when she had bought it, it was gravel?
Based on Google Maps, 2009, there was a tree there.
Like I said, there was gravel there. And I have gravel at my property in Harriman, and I see the, there's just no winning with grass on the gravel. This is the partial reason I went with the concrete.
Thank you.
Yeah, I reviewed those same, the Google Maps history, and I want to think that, I could pull it up, but I don't have my laptop on at this point. I think it's 2012. The entire section, so there was a driveway, and there was a walkway to the front steps. To the left of that, to the fence, which is the side yard, appeared to be entirely grass, and there was a tree in the middle of that. So that was not used for parking, at least as recently as sometime between 2009, 10, 11, something like that. It could not have been because the tree was there.
I'm sorry?
So it could not have been because the tree was there. Right?
There is no tree.
There is no, not now. I'm talking about 2009, 10, 11. It was there.
Not possible. I honestly.
Okay, so that's something we can take up with Google Maps and their documentation of.
We did not take any trees down, because that would take the trees down from, you know, sort of losing the privacy in the next building. So trees were not taken down. Maybe we took some branches down, but not trees.
Okay.
So I think as far as the, if it's a pre-existing use that you're saying, I think if you have other evidence or documentation to support that it was pre-existing before the code came into effect that prohibits the parking, and I think what you're doing is asking in the alternative for the variance.
Yes.
So if the board finds it's not pre-existing, non-conforming, you are seeking the variance to allow it.
Yes.
So I think if there's any additional information you want the board to consider for the pre-existing use part of your application, I would get that submitted.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we have any indication that there's documentation towards it being an approved pre-existing use.
Is there any other questions that the board has relative to the existing in seeking a variance on?
I'm good.
None here.
I think we probably have a lot of concerns because of the nearness to the street, and it's Route 32. The other issue, I believe, is that since this is not an approved condition, this would end up going, needing to go, am I right, before the planning board?
I believe it would need to go to the planning board and likely for consideration of any drainage that might be required for, that would be a condition of any variances ultimately.
We'd have to go to the planning board for site plan?
For the parking area.
For the parking area.
Well, our alternative is if we were to extend the driveway, blacktop that to the back, and have some kind of turnaround, then we would need a variance for the lot coverage. So we're kind of caught between the two variances.
Well, in the event that you do that, you would not be putting concrete down in the area that used to be gravel.
No, but it would be a longer run to the back with blacktop, and then you would need a turnaround, because that's a one-way driveway. So you would have to blacktop it all the way to the back, have some type of turnaround, because you can't have stacking of the cars. So there'd have to be a turnaround. So we would be up at 45, 50% lot coverage.
The concern is still with parking in the front yard and the fact that it's right on Route 32.
Well, we also provided the list of other homes that have it, so it's not out of character.
So many of those, and I would invite, certainly, I'm confused as to some of those that were stated as similar and applicable, because several of them are clearly businesses, at least on the ground level. Now, there may be an apartment above, but I don't necessarily believe that all of those situations that were described as comparable are comparable.
Okay, but.
So I don't know if you've taken a look at that or not specifically.
You would agree that some are.
But those may have been pre-existing conditions from years before the code ever was applied, and Route 32 was expanded, et cetera. So this is a condition that was created recently, right?
Well, we're saying it wasn't, that it was before we bought it.
Just because there was.
But we're saying it is because you want a variance now to pave over, or blacktop or concrete over, a section of the front yard for parking, which clearly by code isn't allowed. So yes, you're asking for a variance now, and.
Well, again, we're asking either for a pre-existing or for the variance, yes.
Okay, so to go back, I think that if you can find documentation showing that it is a pre-existing condition documented, right, that it's been there for whatever period of time, that's fine.
Right.
As we both described here, there's evidence that it has not been since 2005, okay, which is going to probably weigh against you in that regard, then you've got the variance. And I can just say that I believe that members of this board have serious concerns about the entire front yard being used for parking, as close as it is to a sidewalk that's used as well as Route 32. And I'm not sure, and what the planning board will get involved in, if you end up, if we were to grant that variance, is how do you use the curb cut that's there to get in and out, right? Because you can't drive over the curb, right?
Well, they go around. They use the slope because there's enough room. Like, I think you mentioned that it has to be 10 feet away from the street. Certainly is, because there is a place for them to go around onto the lower part of the concrete, I mean, the sidewalk. They don't have to go over the sidewalk.
What I'm saying is, if you use that for parking, that becomes more difficult, and that's what the planning board will be looking for. If we are to grant the variance. Am I, is it, you understand where I'm going with this?
No, I do, but I just feel like, just because Google didn't show cars parked in the green area does not mean people didn't park there before. There were always cars parked in front. It happens that there is more cars now than there was, say, in 2005, but there is always cars parked in front of the building.
So I think the issue with the Google images was really that it was showing grass and a tree, which you couldn't have, not that there weren't cars on the Google image, but that there's, if there's a tree somewhere where, you know, there's now cars, then that would indicate they wouldn't be able to park there. But just backing up for a couple of things. Rich, the exhibits that you had to your, I think one of them was the list you said of properties in the neighborhood. The exhibits, for some reason, didn't come through on my version. I don't know if that.
I do have some of them here, and I can prove them.
But if you could maybe resubmit, like a PDF of those exhibits, or?
Sure, sure.
I have the pictures.
Do you want me to submit it to you or to the board?
If you could submit it, I don't know if anyone else on the board had issues opening it, but if you could submit it to the board.
Sure.
With those exhibits, and then also copy Kelly on that. And I believe the applicant did mention the 10 feet from the street, so if you could show that on, your survey show where, you know, that there's that 10 feet, that you wouldn't need that variance, or if you, if it's not 10 feet, then you would need that variance. So that's something that.
And you also need four spots.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We were supposed to do that.
Board members have any other questions?
No.
Anything else, sir?
I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the next meeting was?
October 11th.
And we'll be on that, provided we make our submission.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I wanted to, motion to adjourn the public hearing until October 11th.
I make a motion to suspend the public hearing until October 11th.
Motion by Ed?
Second.
Second by Beverly. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I could just ask a question, was the public, because I didn't come to the first, were there any comments from the public yet on this?
I don't believe there have been anyone speaking to this application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is 45 Florence Drive, the Rittgers, public hearing for the application of Elke and Walter Rittker requesting a variance for the construction of a solid six-foot fence in the side yard pursuant to Section 146-5B. No fence shall be more than four feet in height in any side yard. And pursuant to Section 146-7A, no fence shall be erected in a front yard in a residential district or along a public right-of-way unless the fence is uniformly less than 50% solid. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 45 Florence Drive in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as Section 226, Block 1, Lot 74.15. Sir.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I want to open the public, motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, he's going to present.
Okay.
So can you just give us a background?
So we had planned to put this six-foot fence up since 2018. We had submitted a variance in 2018 for a 38-foot-ish section. If you're looking from the road at our house on the left side, which that variance was approved. At the time, when we started the paperwork for this variance, which was on the right side of our house, which we were getting backyard work done before we wanted to get the driveway paved, before we put this fence up on the right side of our house, which finally got all done, we're going to submit the variance for the right side, and my wife figured out that the CO was never approved. She made an assumption that it went, the variance got approved and it was going to automatically go to the building permit, which it did not, so all that has expired. So we're resubmitting a variance for both the left side as well as the right side for this fencing.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
So basically, this is not a new fence, just continue with your old one.
Well, if you're looking at our house, there's a 38-foot section that is the previous one, which is up.
Okay.
It is fencing that's currently up. On the right side of our house, there's about 25 feet from a house to a shed, and then another 50 feet from the shed to the property line that would be new fencing.
Got it. Thank you.
Can you just go over those dimensions again, that, what's new? So you said there was around 38 feet that was previously approved, that you're.
Yes, so if you're looking at the house from the road, the 38-foot section on the left side of the house. If you're looking at probably some of the diagrams, it would be on the right side, that 38-foot section is already up. That was the variance that was approved in 2018. We never followed through and got the permit approved for that. The new fencing would be everything on the other side, the 25 feet from the house to the shed, and then the 40-ish feet from the shed to the garden, and a 10-foot section on the other side of the garden before our drainage dips.
So it was 25 feet from the house to the shed, 45 feet from the?
About, yeah, about 45 feet from the shed to the garden, and another 10 feet on the far side of the garden. So I think the current, what's already up is about 38 feet. The new would be about 75 feet of total fencing with a shed and a garden breaking up some of that fencing.
Yeah, I can use that one, either one.
This is existing.
That's the existing, and that's the front yard, but this isn't.
You're right.
It's behind the back line of the house, right? Is the back wall of the house? Clarification. So your, the new fence starts at the back edge wall, so the back of the house, not the side technically, it's in, so.
The back corner of it. That is, yeah, that is the corner of the garage.
Right.
It would start at the backside of the house, the corner of the garage, run to the shed, which is about the 25 feet there.
Right, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted that clarification.
Yep.
Because I'm not sure, so since we're doing this from five years ago, we still need the variance on the 50% solid front yard.
Yes, so you would be, you would need it for all.
For this.
Oh, is that one limited to?
Either way, it's, since it's all one application, we'd be approving it anyway. Don't think it would much matter. I don't think it matters. Okay. Sorry, I spread out since you. I didn't. Could have been on mute. Any other questions? I don't have any other questions. Anyone else?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
So a motion to open the public hearing for the Rittker application, please. Motion by Rachel.
Second.
Second by Ed. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this application? Going once. Going twice. Sold. No comments from the public received. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Sold. Okay, thank you. We'll deliberate at the end of the meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
You're free to stay, or you can contact the building department, probably I would say Friday, Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, thanks. Some housekeeping items. The application was referred to Orange County Department of Planning, August 10th. The county responded that the matter is for local determination. This is a Type 2 application under SECRIM. They have a motion in that regard, please.
I make a motion.
Second. Second by Michael. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? I think that's all of you. Okay. Okay, moving on to the last, I believe, nope, not the last item on our agenda is Ideal Design 20 Blueberry, public hearing on the application of Laser Liebovitz, requesting variances for the construction of a single-family dwelling pursuant to Section 310-43.1. Non-conforming lots of record located in the R2A district are required to have a minimum lot width of 100 feet, a minimum side yard setback of 30 feet, a minimum setback for both side yards of 60 feet, and a maximum lot coverage of 20%. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 20 Blueberry Lane in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as Section 217, Block 2, Lot 3. The applicant is present?
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Yitzhak Stein with Ideal Design. I came to represent my customer, 20 Blueberry, which is, he's looking to reconstruct a new, new proposed house, the existing footprint of his existing house, which can use a replacement. And he's, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. It's only 40% of an acre, and also it's his setbacks, his size setbacks, also pre-existing, non-conforming, and he would like to keep the exact same footprint and exact same layout, actually, size, everything.
Okay, and this is the new plot plan, as I see, was provided with the bulk table requirements? Has the planning board requested that, or?
Yeah, we went to the planning board.
Somebody requested it.
Yes.
Michael Scott. Okay. All right, so the proposal is to demolish the existing building?
That's correct.
And?
Keep the existing amount of bedrooms and bathrooms, and actually all other things on the property existing.
Okay. All right, so we have several variances at play here.
So if I made the, so this does fall under your code provisions for undersized lots that were existing before revisions to the zoning code made them non-conforming? So you have some reduced bulk requirements for these lots? So the first is it's a reduced minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet. So they do, I believe, meet that, but they're 17,787 square feet. They are required to have a lot width of 100 feet, and I believe it was said that they needed the lot width variance, but on further review, they are over 100 feet, so it's not the, the lot width variance isn't required. The only two would be variances for the required side yard. They're proposing one side yard of 17.6 feet and one of 16.8, and then also for both side yards, which requires a total of 60, and they have a total of 34.4.
So not as significant as initially thought. Everybody get that?
Got it.
Just checking. Okay. I believe from a variance perspective that that covers everything. We don't have anything further, right? I dropped something. Sounded like it. Any questions for the applicant?
You said that the footprint would be the same as the current one? It's not, it's going to be taller, or just?
Yeah, he wants to redo the foundation as well.
Okay.
So yeah, he wants to basically have a garage beneath, yeah, a little taller, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's still.
What, the number of bedrooms, bathrooms?
No, no, unfinished, fully unfinished, yes, just storage.
Got it.
No windows even, I mean.
Thank you.
Okay.
One question. So it's, the platform is being raised, what does that do? The house will be higher. What does it do to your, for your neighbor? Would it block their view, an existing view?
I don't think there's any special view over there.
But from your neighbor's point of view?
Uh huh.
It may not be a view for you, but from your neighbor, what they're used to seeing now, will they continue to see?
Yeah, what I understand from the bulk requirements, that the 35 feet is something permitted, and this is like much less than 35 feet, it's probably going to be like a total of 15 to 17, 18 feet. I mean, it's like one story on top of a half story for the underground, so.
So the additional height is seven or eight feet?
Hmm?
The additional height would be seven or eight feet over what's there now?
Yeah, not even, because the existing roof is basically, there's a new roof in the place with the existing roof, and it's only like the few feet that it's going to be higher from the grade.
Okay.
And this is a relatively flat parcel, correct? I mean, if you understand my, I've seen.
It's, yeah, it's basically flat. It's fully, yeah, basically flat.
Okay. So it's, you know, it's not like, you know, if you build, if you add elevation, it's on a hill, you know, that makes a big difference, but if it's flat, you're writing a few feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And just from a building perspective, the pool is staying as-is?
Yes.
Which is one of the reasons you're not changing the footprint, I'm sure.
Obviously.
Okay. That would make sense.
Yeah, and they have the sewer in the front, the septic is in the front, so it's basically... Yeah, and they have the sewer in the front, the septic is in the front, so it's basically the best if they can keep the existing footprint.
Yeah, makes sense. Beverly, anything else?
Nope.
Mike?
No.
Ed, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Rachel?
No, I mean, I was curious about the sheds, in terms of, they are a little bit close to the property line. Is the owner of that building potentially moving them depending on, you know...
Yeah, I guess so, because he gets storage in his basement.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem, I mean, removing all this. It's probably, he bought it like this. He didn't build all these sheds. Yeah, I also saw some small sheds on the property, but it's like, it can be removed.
Yeah, he has four sheds, which, and, excuse me, I would say, that'll be an issue that the building inspector will take up when you go to get a building permit. Likely that the building inspector will say, one, you've got a shed in the side yard, which can't be. You know the...
Makes sense.
The code for the sheds and what have you. The building inspector will...
Again, it's probably pre-existing, and then, yeah, again, he'll work around it.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay, anything else for the applicant?
No.
Very good. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion by Rachel.
Second.
Second by Beverly. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this application? Going once. Going twice. Gone, and I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we had a referral to... Where is it? Yes. The Orange County Department of Planning for 239, and they returned indicating that this is for local determination. And the other piece of housekeeping would be that this is likewise a type 2 action under SECRIM, so I'll make a motion to declare this type 2 under SECRIM.
Second.
Second by Ed. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll discuss at the end of the meeting. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
I can.
No, no, you're welcome to stay. We'll discuss and do a determination at the end of the meeting. Okay?
So, will this be carried for the next meeting?
What we would end up doing is doing a draft resolution of approval, so we'll have to come back for approval at the next meeting. So you're welcome to stay, or you can... No worries. Thank you. And our next item on the agenda is... So the Woodbury Common Pylon Sign was withdrawn. It's off the agenda, and I guess there's no public hearing for that, because it was closed, if I'm not mistaken, on the Valdez application.
Yes, the public hearing's been closed.
Okay, so we go... Let's do that deliberation first, because Mrs. Valdez has... Is here, and has been waiting, not necessarily patiently, although somewhat patiently, for a very long time. So, can I let you do a review?
Sure. So I think the question that was raised last time was that 25% limitation of the existing dwelling, for an accessory or additional dwelling unit, you cannot exceed 25% of the floor area of the existing dwelling. So the calculations were submitted, the existing dwelling is 2,242 square feet, and then there's the structure where the new unit is proposed, is 537 square feet, and then there's a breezeway as well. And I did confirm with the building inspector that for purposes of this application, the way it's proposed, the breezeway wouldn't be counted towards that 25% limitation, so it would meet that restriction. In addition to the special permit, you do also have two area variances. First is for the required lot area. Minimum of two acres is required, and they have an existing lot area of one acre, and then the required rear yard requires a minimum rear yard setback of 50 feet, and the applicant has an existing rear yard setback of 29.8 feet.
Thank you, Ashley. I am looking for the five factors, and I'm not finding it.
Do you want me to go over them?
No, I'm looking for the...
Your list?
The applicant's responses, or presentation. Oh, boy, how can it not be in here? Well, I guess we could probably discuss them without...
Encouraged.
Yeah, the response was... Is that appropriate?
You can.
All on paper, and no response. Nope, they do not appear to be anywhere in here.
I think it's fine, we just...
Yeah, we're just gonna have to go over them.
And if you want, so the criteria for the special permit, it's that the unit can only be used for up to two additional persons. We talked about the 25% limitation already. The third is that all bulk dimensional requirements of the zoning district have to be met, so that's where the variances are triggered. There's also a requirement that if it's sold, the permit becomes null and void, and the property has to be restored. The applicant will be required to give names of who will be residing in the additional unit, and then all facilities will be subject to annual inspection by the building department. So typically, those would all be conditions of any approval, as far as the variance factors, and you could discuss both variances together if you like. The first is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variances.
I don't see any...
I don't see that.
Negative impact. Anyone?
No.
So we'll agree on that.
The second is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than an area variances.
Yeah, there's no... There's no option here.
No. She has no choice.
Correct.
The third is whether the requested area variances are substantial. So that was the... The one is seeking one acre lot area where the requirement is two, the second is a rear yard setback requirement of 50 feet, and they're seeking 29.8 for the existing rear setback.
Again, I think as in many of our applications, it's numerically significant, but it's either a pre-existing lot configuration, they have no choice, and the second one is not significant. Agreed? At least that's my thought. Anyone else?
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll agree that...
The next factor is whether the proposed variances will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or district.
I don't think so.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think we see that.
And the last is whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which typically is the case, but that factor is not determinative.
It's self-created, but doesn't prevent us from approving the variances. Agreed?
Agreed.
So if the board would like to... A motion to authorize the zoning board attorney to draft a resolution of approval for your next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Finally. So next...
[inaudible].
Next month, the draft will be, and we'll approve it at the... Well, we'll vote on it at the next meeting, so likely to be approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Take care, goodnight. And now we go to the Rittger application for deliberation. So we have, essentially, we're reapproving the fence that was erected on the left side looking at the house?
Mm-hmm.
For the variance that was approved in 2018?
Right.
So this has all been... It was approved before, and now we're looking at the side yard, or the right side of the house, for the additional. We've got two variances, one for 50% solid in the front, and the other one is six versus four feet. Probably a summary that I didn't need to give. Any thoughts from anyone?
I think it's a continuation of what was approved and started.
Well, effectively, because they never got a CO, there is no variance. The variance has expired, so we are effectively... Need to treat it as if it's being done for the first time. Yes, a previous board did deliberate on these exact same bits of information, if you will, same presentation, and they approved it. Just as our... As we look at it, does anyone have any thoughts about it that are negative?
No negatives.
It's well set back from the road.
Yeah.
It's a very quiet, private kind of road that ends in a cul-de-sac. I don't see it having a negative impact on anything, especially since the one fence has been there.
If it's involved with the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. And there's a legitimate need for it in the context of...
Safety.
Of safety.
Yeah.
For a child. So I don't see any particular issues with it. So, wanna go to the five factors?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. I don't... Didn't see the applicants. Again, I don't know if it's here or not, from the previous application, but maybe it is. Partial determination. Yeah, no, I...
That's theirs.
Oh, that's theirs. How come I don't have that? I probably do somewhere. "Will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties?" The applicant states, "No, the granting of this variance should in no way negatively impact the neighborhood or nearby properties."
I agree.
Anyone disagree?
No.
No.
Okay, all agree? "Can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variance? No, unfortunately not. The rest of the fence must match what's already there. In addition, a standard four-foot high fence would not provide our daughter with the privacy and security that would benefit her best due to the backyard being uphill from the road and driveway."
Makes sense what he's saying.
Yeah, and I agree with the applicant here as well. Okay? "How substantial is the variance you're requesting? We're requesting a variance in the standard four-foot high fence to a height of six feet. As we have a fairly large parcel of land, this is set back from the road significantly and partially obscured by trees. This height increase will not seem substantial or aesthetically displeasing from the street view."
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with the applicant here as well. Anyone disagree?
No.
Okay. Four, "Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or district?" Applicant states, "No, the granting of the variance should have... Not have any adverse effect or impact physically, environmentally, or in character."
Agreed.
I agree with that as well. "Is the alleged difficulty self-created? No, our daughter's safety, security, and privacy are related to her developmental needs, the need to match the existing fence that had prior approval as a situation that we created, but ultimately due to our daughter's needs." So as many other applications, we'll probably disagree with the applicant that it is self-created because you want to put up a fence, but it doesn't prevent us from doing anything here.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yes? Any other discussion or deliberation on this, or would someone like to make a motion to ask council to draw up a decision consistent with our deliberations here tonight?
I'll make a motion.
Rachel? Who was the second? Michael with the second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. We'll be back with a final vote next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is probably...
Oh, there it is.
In the last page that I didn't look at.
I didn't have many papers, so...
Oh, my goodness. Okay, where's my agenda? I think that's it.
Do you want to deliberate on the...
Ideal design. Sorry, we need to deliberate on that. My apologies. Okay.
On which one? The problems?
Now this time, I'm gonna find that... I'm gonna get some piece of paper first.
Oh, that's the...
Before I start going. See, that's another note for the new chairman. Pull that out and have her ready.
[inaudible].
I'm still loading. Notice, you got it all. I'm still loading things up.
Oh, great.
Okay, Ideal Design 20 Blueberry deliberations. We're looking at needing variances for required side yard on both sides. The required is 30 feet. The variances would be 12 and 1/2, 12.4, and 13.2 feet respectively. The both side yards combined need 60 feet. They've got 34.4, and those are the two, right? Those are the only two variances required. Pre-existing lot, pre-existing situation, if he were not tearing down the foundation, he wouldn't need the variances, because he built a building on top of them.
Yeah.
So this is essentially where he's... Because he's tearing it down, he needs the variances. Any thoughts before I go into the five factors?
Yeah, so when... Isn't that considered significant?
Is what considered...
It's almost 50% the difference.
Sorry?
The difference... The variance between the two sides and what's required.
Well, you're looking at 12 and 1/2 versus 12 and 1/2 out of 30, so under 50%, and 13, 13.2 out of 30, which is under 50%. You can call them significant numerically, but given, I think, the way many of us would interpret it, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth in any way, shape, or form...
No, I just want to understand.
Is that, given that that is the parcel, and he's building in exactly the same footprint as is there now, it tends to make you think of it as, even if it is substantial, it's not changing anything.
The house that exists there right now already has those same dimensions, so they're not growing any... The house itself, if they left it this way, it would just be grandfathered in because of it.
I mean, I think...
They're just building on the exact same property.
I thought he loses those benefits from it.
He does. He does. That's why he's...
But he's still building on, you know, the footprint.
Same footprint.
Yeah. I mean, I like the thing in the same way that like, if he wanted to add like, an extra bedroom on top, you know, that's like, the slight difference it would have if you put like, a room in his attic, you know?
So there's footprint of the structure, and then there's setback, right, for the property line. So that's where I'm... I have no trouble with those lines. The footprint and structure of the front, so it's gotta be exact, but is there encroaching on the sides?
No, what he's saying is, there will be no change in the distance to the side yard as it exists today.
Okay, so there currently is encroachments on the side yard? That existing footprint encroaches on the side yards, but they're seeking that same encroachment, so they're not increasing that at all?
So those live on.
So that's what they're seeking the variance for?
That's what they want the variance for, which then means that they live on, yes.
Basically, you can look at it this way. If there was a disaster and the house was knocked down, and they were just putting it
If there was a disaster and the house was knocked down, they were just putting it right back up on the same piece of property, they would have to request those variances, but...
Yeah.
So it's... The house, if you look at it, it's a very old... It's an older house that was before this.
The structure, I have no problem with that. It's surrounding the area.
We have granted... Each case is its own, and you look at each one individually and determine the significance, if you will, whether it's substantial in that context. It's not a hard and fast numbers game, right?
And what's on either side? Their homes or wetlands or...
There are other parcels there, but again...
Because it's existing.
It's existing. There's fencing typically. I believe this one shows fencing.
Yes.
That's there, so, and it's kind of overgrown on... I think on one side.
On one side, yeah.
The neighbor's side. The neighbor's side has...
I take that back, but you know, there was a period of time where there was, you know, it was a little bit overgrown.
I'm right there with you. All right, so shall we go to the five factors?
Foundation of the same house. I'm okay with that.
Okay. "Will the granting of the variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create detriment to nearby properties?" The applicant says, "No, the house will be rebuilt on the existing footprint as it is now."
Based on the houses around, and that block, that is really the oldest and dangerous-looking house they had there. So if I'm building it, that could prove...
Yeah, I would agree with that, actually.
I drove out the other day, and that was like the other's house there. It would be an improvement there.
Yeah, it will be an improvement, without doubt.
The house with an up block?
Don't Google Maps my house, though. So it'd be safe to say that we agree with the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Very, very good. "Can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variance?" The applicant states, "No, the lot..." "No, the lot house is non-conforming," excuse me. That's a confusing sentence. I believe what he's saying is, "No, we need the variances because the lot is the lot and can't change, and it's currently in a non-conforming state. It's a pre-existing non-conforming, but they're tearing down the house. Give us the variance." That's my translation, how's that?
Yeah, that sounds good. I don't see a problem with that. I mean, he is keeping the same footprint. He's not trying to expand it in any way, so...
Yeah, I would say that there is no way for him to do it without the variance. So we agree with the applicant. "How substantial is the variance you're requesting?" "It's not substantial at all," states the applicant. "It's just a request to rebuild a house on the same footprint." Again, we're looking at forty, forty-five percent typically on either side. So while it might be numerically significant, in the context, I don't believe it is. It's, you know, it's going on the same piece of property that the house exists already. So if we denied the variance and they couldn't build the house, it's still gonna be in that same spot, so... I don't see a drastic change for that personally. So we're going to agree with the applicant?
Agreed.
Agree conditionally, how's that? "Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?" Simply stated, he says, "No."
Yeah, I love his accent.
I would say, I would say we would... I'm gonna agree with that.
I agree with him. Yeah, I agree with him.
Short, sweet, and to the point. He says, "No," we say, "Yes." There you go. "Is the alleged difficulty self-created?" "No, just looking to rebuild a very old house." Because you're trying to rebuild the house, you're self-created. So we'll disagree with the applicant, but that does not prevent us from...
No, no.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Well, what's the motion?
For attorney to draft a resolution to approve the variance, now, the variance request.
So you would like to ask council to draft a decision consistent with the discussions we've had this evening?
Yes, sir.
That was motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. And with that, I believe that I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I know.
Pick one.
I really didn't second anything.
Pick one.
Oh, I'm sorry.